Are we ready? I called and ordered the regular meeting, April 27, 2015, Los Alamos Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Daniel?
Here.
Commissioner Debold?
Here.
Commissioner Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Self-ful panic?
Here.
Vice Chair Quilty?
Eric.
Chair Riley?
Here. Please join me in the pleasant allegiance. If anyone in the audience or anyone present wants to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time for you to come forth and do so.
Good evening, everyone. Richard Murphy. Here for twofold. One, to explain that tonight, we're going to begin taping the meetings for at least YouTube discussion with the thought of increasing the transparency in the city and have the meetings available for people who aren't able to watch live or come here can at least, you know, catch up and look at certain items at their own pace. Would greatly appreciate your comments if it affects the meetings at all. I find you'll forget it's on because, you know, it's not on your side, and you all go home and look at it one time, and then you realize, well, okay, that was it. Second of all, I'm here as the mayor today to thank you all for the work on the planning commission. I know a lot of you have put in endless hours, years actually, getting this right. We really have a document to be proud of, and it really comes from all you. Our work was very easy because of the fact that you guys deliberated it, thought about it, went out, looked at every site, had really good discussions about it, and gave us a product that was really easy to approve. So, thank you for that.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? See no one come forward. I will close oral communications, and we will move forward with approval in a minute for the regular meeting, February 9, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve in a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any debate? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried. Consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar, so we will move on to public hearings. Item A, conditional use permit, request to install alkaline water vending machine with outdoor access in the general commercial zone. Do I have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Riley, and members of the planning commission. Conditional use permit 1501 is a request to install an alkaline vending machine with outdoor access at the general commercial zone, I mean, in the general commercial zone at 501 Fort Cotella Avenue. The applicant is here with us tonight, Henry Kim, right there, and he runs two businesses out of the same unit, Anaheim Soft, which is a website development group, and then Alka-Pay Water, which is what this vending machine will be for. It already has the business going on inside the unit, but this will be outside where this machine will be facing. An approval of this conditional use permit would allow the installation of the water dispensing machine in the front window in conjunction with the indoor businesses. Mr. Kim also has a computer, I've already said that, the computer website business. This business is called Alka-Pay Water, and will be vending through a machine that will be placed in the window facing toward the public outside that won't stick out actually from the window. It'll be just in the window flush, and it really takes no space outside, so staff was feeling that parking spaces are not required for this extra use for basically what is a vending machine. And we also feel like that the 24-hour use of this vending machine could possibly make noise if someone was filling in the middle of the night, and there are residences behind this building. So, we have, in the resolution, limited the hours to the normal hours of the commercial general zone, which is 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And also that there be signage placed on the machine saying you can only purchase it during that time. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1501 with the adoption of the resolution 1501. Thank you, Chair Riley.
Any questions for staff?
I have a couple. How is water going to be? How do they get the water to the machine?
Oh, I'll let the owner of the business explain that. It's through a pipe through the regular water system, and then it's filtered in the machine, basically is how it works. Is that correct, sir?
Okay, I don't know if I should... But where's the water source?
Oh, it's the regular water, tap water, that's filtered through the machine, through an alkaline filtering process.
If the, I would imagine, I haven't been in the site, but I would imagine that the, there's probably a bathroom in the back, I'm going to guess.
Yes.
So, how are they going to pipe it to the front?
They've already run pipes to a machine that's on the inside of the building, and they will continue the piping through the walls to this as well, to the machine.
And then the same question for a drain. How does the, and where does it drain to?
They actually had to put a floor sink in the inside of the business, and there's a water pipe that comes out of the drainage from both the machine that exists and the one that's coming in.
So, okay.
That drains to that.
I was just trying to figure, how would you get into the sewer system without...
Oh, yeah, through the floor sink.
Without tapping into a pipe or something? Okay. All right.
Question. Is the concern about noise, is that because, is there noise generated when the machine's dispensing water, or is that noise concern for people that are going to be purchasing it, maybe speaking loudly, or running their engine, or playing music? Where's the noise concern? Is it the consumers of the water, or the process of distribution?
Right. Well, the first concern was that this is a CG zone, and the hours are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., unless a CUP allows them to go outside of those hours. We felt that there is a possibility that there could be speaking, and people with their engines running outside while they're filling a really large, they have different size receptacles for taking it home, and it could be loud, but, you know, it is water. It's not, they're not selling alcohol or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What's this water used for?
Oh, it's just drinking water.
They say it's alkaline drinking water? It's a special type of...
Yeah, we should probably call...
We should call the applicant up and have the applicant come explain the benefits of alkaline water.
When you're in the public hearing.
Yeah, let's do that in the public hearing.
I have one last question.
For staff?
For staff. Since this is going to be located in the window, what was the window space? Are there any code requirements in the commercial area that requires so much window? Like in a residence, you have to have a certain square footage of window for, you know, for light?
No.
And sometimes for ventilation? Do we have that same requirement in the commercial area?
You can only cover up to 25% of your windows with signage. However, if someone were to even put curtains up, and other than, we do have in the massage ordinance that they can't have their, I mean, they have to have curtains that are openable, but in a business like this, they can close the whole window.
I think ours more concerned about the building code violations, and as long as they have their exit strategy, and their doors meet that exit strategy, they'll be fine. This was a plate glass window once that didn't open, so they're not changing that aspect of it.
Right. So, we're not in conflict with...
No. Air circulation, Title 24.
Not so much that it doesn't open, but either for requirements to have light and or...
You're right.
Yeah. Okay.
Why is the benefits of alkaline water relevant to this decision about whether or not allowed there? I'm just curious.
To my question?
Well, I don't know about benefits of alkaline water.
I'm more curious about if it's a commercial product, if it is something that is safely consumable. You hear commercials about different kinds of water used for carpet cleaning and stuff like that, you know, and my concern would be, is it something that's safe for public consumption?
Is that relevant to here, though?
Yeah, I think public safety is something that's always weighs on our decisions, right?
Sure.
I can tell you, this isn't the first Alka-Pay, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it wrong.
Alka-Pay.
Alka-Pay Water, that they already, they already exist in your city. They're just selling it inside the store, and they exist in other cities with the window operation as well.
Any other questions for staff? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward.
And we may want to explain the public hearing process for the public, that we allow the applicant to speak, and we allow anybody who's interested in the project to speak, and then if their issues raised, the applicant gets a right to speak last and address the issues raised, and then the public hearing's closed and commission debates it.
So, that's what we do.
That's what we do. So, now, so following the Rosenbergs of explaining to the public where we are.
So, all right, so I think that was sufficient. Do you guys have any kind of presentation or comments to make in regards to the project?
No. So, my name is Usain, and I'm Henry's good friend for 10 years. You know, I'm just here to explain, try to help him explain his business here. So, I think there has been a good explanation about his business, and I just wanted to point out that there had been already existing business in Alka-Pay Water, and we also brought a flyer, you know, explaining the benefits of it. If you're interested, you know, you're welcome to take a look at it. And, yeah, I think there had been good explanations, so there's probably no additional explanation of what the business is about.
Okay. I think signage. Okay, just for our edification, could you maybe explain a few of the benefits of the product?
Sure. I'm not being the expert, but basically, it's, our primary target is, you know, health conscious for people, you know, they're, they want to drink water that helps absorb into your body quicker. So, it does help you with hydration, you know, compared to regular water, it should be absorbing faster and help you detoxifying, and supposed to help you with the immune system and antioxidant matters in there. And it should help you with increased blood flows, and they've added essential minerals into the water, so you could absorb your body minerals that are needed in your body through the water. So, those are the things.
Great. Thank you. All right. If you don't have anything else to say, you guys can, you're welcome to sit down. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this matter? All right, see no one additional come forward. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like a question, questions about it.
Are we...
Do I ask the applicant now, or do I ask the staff?
Depends. If it's about alkaline water, it would be the applicant. If you would like to talk about zoning, that's us.
Well, it's not exactly zoning. How is it, is it regulated by the Orange County Health Department? How does this come in?
Yes, it is. Yeah, and they've been advised of it, and they've passed.
Because you're now going to have an outside unit as well, and you've got to be conscious of how clean it is.
Correct.
Bacteria can grow on these things, so it is monitored. And is there flavor to this water, do you know, or is it just water tasting?
I've never had it. I can honestly say. Mr. Kim, is there a flavor added to the water?
He brought some tonight if someone wanted to try it.
We brought a sample if anyone wanted to try, but it's pretty much a few sources of magnesiums and calciums, trace of sodium, potassium added. I drank it personally. I couldn't tell those flavors, but, you know, I don't know if anyone's sensitive enough to tell those mineral flavors.
Any other questions for the applicant while he's up here? Okay. Thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 15-01 with the amended hours as staff has directed.
I'll second.
I'd like to make an amended motion to adopt the resolution without the hours that staff recommends. Move for discussion.
I'll second for discussion. Can I do that? Yes, I can.
Okay, so that's, is that, that's an amended motion.
That's an amended motion.
Now, we have discussion on that amended motion first.
Which would be a 24-hour use and deleting the conditions of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I don't understand the conditions, because, I mean, this, to me, this is, they're vending this product indoors during regular business hours. This is an, this is a proposal to allow them to vend this product next area of their building. To me, this isn't any different than an ATM machine where people can come 24/7, pull up, access money. This is water, they're accessing water here, they can access money. There's no restriction on time for those uses. In addition, we have permitted 7-Elevens to sell beer up until midnight, and we're limiting this gentleman's water, or this applicant's water vending proposal to 10:00 o'clock. I don't see the logic behind any of that, so I don't know why we would restrict the hours of use here.
Mr. Chair, Mayor?
No. Does anyone else have any comments in regards to that?
I can see your point of view. In your eye, it's water. How noisy are they going to be? It's hard to say how many people will come during the night. I don't know. Could we make it to where we did a trial, and if there was complaints, then it's brought back for readdressing after six months, for instance, or you just want to go with just the no conditions on hours?
I don't see need for a trial. I think that's a waste of staff's time, city time. I personally don't see this any different than an ATM machine. But there's vending, water vending machines located in other venues that aren't built in, they're standalone water vending machines. I've seen those at numerous locations, and I don't know that we even, I've never seen one of those come before this commission, so I don't know why this is different, possibly because it's built in and requires certain permitting, but I don't, personally don't see the need to restrict hours of operation. If we give complaints, then we want to revisit it, but I don't think that's going to be the case.
Excuse me. Can you put the other photo up? Is that apartments over this?
No. Those are offices.
Those are offices.
Yeah, above on the second floor, yeah.
How are they accessed?
Through stairwells.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other comments? All right, I have a motion, an amended motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. Or do I need to take a motion on that? Or do we just call it a vote? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed.
I guess I'll say aye. I wouldn't oppose.
So, with that, the amended motion carries, and the conditional use permit is approved without any restriction on hours of operation.
Was it important?
Yeah.
Congratulations, and good luck.
Restriction on, then you got to enforce it.
With that, we'll move on to item A, staff reports, resolution of intention number 15-02.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and commissioners, your hard work on the general plan is appreciated, and we're going to celebrate that tomorrow at 4:00. You're all invited into this very room to talk about the general plan. The city council wants to share their appreciation with you, so please come tomorrow at 4:00 in this room, and there'll be food, I believe, food and cake. So, come on by. As part of the general plan, you thought your work was done, now it's not done.
Just beginning.
There, it has just begun. There will be probably six to seven months of adopting changes to the zoning ordinance that are reflected in the general plan. That'll make sure that the zoning ordinance is compatible with the general plan, but it's going to take a lot of work to get to that point. There'll be text amendments, changing words and uses. There'll be land use changes, of changing a property from industrial to residential. You have your general plan policies that support those decisions now, so you can make those decisions regarding the individual properties. So, we're going to bring properties to you, one by one, two by two, three by three. We're going to cluster them, and they're going to start coming to you, but the first step before doing that is you have to adopt a resolution of intention. It's one of the requirements in our code, that a resolution of intention of your future action has to be adopted by the resolution before you go and make those changes. And so, we wanted to do it in one full swoop, and then we'll bring them to you individually. We'll probably start next month, so you'll see a public hearing notice for the first properties, and we'll bring those back to you. And the properties will be publicly noticed, the properties 500 feet from those properties will be publicly noticed, and they'll be brought before you. And with that, we recommend, this isn't a public hearing to adopt the resolution, just adopt the resolution, and then that makes sure that we followed our code before we carry on with the rezoning of properties.
Okay, and with that, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. Any debate? Anyone have any comments, questions? Okay, so with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried. Item nine, items from the community development director.
Like I said before, tomorrow at 4:00 in this room, the general plan appreciation party, and it should be fun, so please come, bring your spouses, bring your wives, husbands, kids. And Tom wants to take a group photo after the meeting.
Tomorrow? Bring kids?
Yeah. Come, shoot Arizona, get them.
I'll bring my great kids. All right, and then on to commissioner reports. See what you have any...
I do. I have an observation, a question, and a request. The observation, Stephen, I'm not sure if it's related, but I think when they were building the, or constructing the swim school, they carved, they cut the road, I think it's them to probably tap in. You might want to check on their patching. It's now a speed bump or a pothole.
That's from the sewer line in Surtos?
I don't, yeah, it's on Surtos. My request is to have these rules, at least in my packet, the Rosenberg's rules, can they remain in my binder, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And then, my question is, it's actually a proposal also. It seems to me that would be value to the city that we request to require commercial leases, a copy of a commercial lease to be provided to the city. If council has an issue with this, please bring it up, but because I think the city would benefit by knowing what the agreements and conditions are, exist between commercial landlords and their laces. For instance, the, and I know this is on the record and maybe in file, but for instance, on the swim school, they've agreed to remove the pools if they should ever remove, leave the site. I think there's information, valuable information in a lot of these leases, and particularly in properties that don't come before this commission or any of the other bodies in the city, that if the city had a copy of that contractual agreement, there would be benefit to the city from that. That's my proposal, comment.
Yeah, is that a debatable item, or is it...
No, because it's not on the agenda. It can be...
Can I ask him? I just, I don't quite understand what you just said. I mean, at the end, is this for all leases in the city, or is this only for those that are on agenda items, that are coming before the council or the city?
Well, that's, I guess that's...
Let's make sure we're doing stuff the right way up here. So, you've posed a question to staff. If we want to have discussion about it, then perhaps you should ask that that be agendized or something, right? Would that be appropriate?
The appropriate way would be, if there's enough interest with the commission, to direct staff to study this issue and spend resources on this issue before we brought back. I mean, that's the direction we would need. We could put it on the agenda in the future to see if there's enough interest to carry it forward.
Maybe I can amend my proposal, because it is very broad. If staff determines that in select situations, maybe determined by size of business, or type of business, or location of business, that certain leases would give the city information that might be beneficial to the city, then I would ask staff to, if they identify that, to maybe study it and bring it forth. I'm not saying every commercial lease and every commercial landlord, but I'm sure there are some situations where the terms and conditions codified or contractually decided upon by the parties would be, we'd like to know that as a city. So, it's not a request, it's just food for thought.
Can I ask you a question, Victor? So, like you brought up the swim school, where they said if they move out, they'll take out the pools, but the city's not going to enforce that. I mean, it's not a lease with us. The landlord would be the one to enforce it. I just think it would be, I mean, these guys are swamped as it is. I don't know who's going to file and track all those leases.
Yeah, and I think that's a specific example, but I think if we want to discuss the issue in greater detail...
It should be on...
Have it come back to us, and so that we can do it in a public forum that's been agendized, so. So, I think the ask has been made of staff, and...
What we could do is bring you an example. We'll do research, see if other cities require it, and then we'll bring it back to you.
Just along, I think I know where Victor's going, and I think just along that line in general. Can we not agendize or ask to have agendize, just a general discussion amongst us on possibly what information we would like to have in a staff report beyond what we're getting right now, beyond what we're, you know, in general, what we're getting?
Yeah, how do we do that?
Just, just, just a discussion so we can talk about...
Like, if we want to have discussion about something that we want to potentially have agendized in the future.
Ask staff to put it on the agenda.
Then, listen to...
Could somebody paraphrase it for us?
So, we'd like to agendize a discussion...
To determine, to...
Around this commercial lease question, and what sort of documentation, if any...
Talk about documentation in general, this should be included in staff report.
I have a question on it. You know, we're talking about agendizing it. How do we, as a group, vote on whether we want to waste your time doing that just because somebody thinks it's a good idea?
I think any commissioner has a right task for any item to be agendized.
We have a policy on... We actually, this came up earlier today. I think the way to do it is, when somebody has an idea, we, on the council, it takes two members of the city council, or the mayor can add an item to the agenda. That's the council policy.
Do we have rules in place for the commission?
You don't have the same policy, but I think you'd be safe if you followed that policy. I don't think you'd go wrong if you followed the same policy that your parent body follows.
Okay. Okay.
So, the chair can always add an item to the agenda, or if you follow what the city council does, two members. Like if Marianne has an issue, she wants to add agenda, she'd get another person on her team and request it.
And they do that at the meeting.
They could do it at the meeting, they could do it. It's nice to do it in public. It's really confusing when you leave this body and then request it.
At what point in the meeting is, does that come up?
Right now. You're on that agenda area.
All right, so I think we've got interest from two commissioners down here, so I think.
We'll just leave it very vague.
Broad, broad discussion on.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Yes.
Something different? Maybe at the next meeting, we have just some photos again of some of our completed projects?
Sure.
It's kind of nice to see. I think they turned out really well.
Got it.
That's all.
Anything else? All right, with that, meeting adjourned.